It is Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. The Board of Selectmen's meeting. All members are present. At 5:30, we had an executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 333 Andover Street in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A6, and further to approve executive session minutes from September 24th, 2018, and October 22nd, 2018, in accordance with GL Chapter 30A, Section 22. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some treasury warrants to approve. Number 17, 17A, 18, 18A, 19, and 19A. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Eaton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? We have no minutes to approve this evening, so we're going to our 6:30 appointment. We're a little behind, and I apologize for that. We have Anthony Teresi, an associate, and Frederick Kingsley, an associate with the Collins Center, to give us an overview of the financial management structure of the town.
If I could just, yeah, if you just... Sure, let me just introduce the topic a little bit. So first of all, by way of introductions with respect to our guests, so Tony Teresi is the former Finance Director in Andover, 32 years in Andover, as well as previous experience working for the city of Worcester and also in Danvers, so collectively over 40 years of experience in the municipal sector. He's going to be talking to the board this evening about a revenue and expenditure model that he developed for us to use as a tool in enhancing our ability to look at our financial situation going forward. And then also with us this evening is Rick Kingsley. Mr. Kingsley is going to be talking to the board about the financial management structure. One of the things we were looking for when we pursued this community compact grant from the state, given the changeover that we're all aware of that's going to be happening in the finance departments, we wanted to take this opportunity to assess, you know, whether the current structure is most appropriate. I would just note, in terms of Mr. Kingsley's background, that he was the Bureau Chief at the Municipal Data Management and Technical Assistance Bureau for the State Division of Local Services for, I believe, about 20 years or so. Responsibilities included, 30 years, okay. Responsibilities included supervising the division's municipal consulting services, overseeing distribution of local aid, and directing the publication of municipal finance, financial data on the division's website. He was also appointed by the Secretary of Administration and Finance to chair the state financial control boards for two different regional school districts that were in severe fiscal crisis. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Teresi, who will provide the overview on the financial model, revenue expenditure model.
Thank you, Jeff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. By way of thanks, I really wanted to extend my appreciation, not just to Jeff, but to Mike. Mike has really gone above and beyond the call of duty when we look at the work that he's done over the years. We were tasked with a couple of projects funded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Grant Program. This particular piece, the first piece of this presentation tonight, deals with revenue and expenditure forecast model. I want to preface that by saying that the town has, over the years, maintained its own revenue and expenditure forecast. Our approach is to enhance this, develop it as a tool that can be used by the community for analyzing multiple scenarios. So what I'm presenting tonight is, I really just want to give an overview. The numbers that are in here are our kind of first scenario. It's by no means meant to be the engraved-in-granite kind of bottom line. As Jeff mentioned, as you'll see as we go through this, it is really a tool that the town can use to modify assumptions, change projection numbers as new information comes in. So let me stop by just kind of, just a quick overview of why, you know, why it's important and how a tool like this is helpful to officials. And by officials, I'm speaking both internal management people and then elected bodies such as yourself and the appointed Finance Committee members. One of the benefits of a tool like this is that it will kind of force you to annual review and respond to changes in commitments and needs. So the tool, it starts with a base projection. We keep the base assumptions at the beginning, but as you're reviewing changes in the needs of the community, changes in perhaps some outside influence, you're able to make those adjustments, and it's a tool for kind of a five-year projection. The other thing it lets you do is it helps you identify fiscal challenges and opportunities. So in other words, if there is a sense that some particular item is going to have a dramatic increase or a dramatic decrease, you'd be able to run that through a model and see the effect of that particular change or multiple changes. It allows you to do this kind of on the fly because it's an interactive model. The spreadsheets are linked. Third, it helps you develop, monitor, and adjust long-term budget policies as necessary. A third project that we've engaged in is providing assistance on developing financial management policies, and we will be providing the town with recommended, or I should say proposed, policies that you would certainly want to look at, make adjustments as your own unique circumstances require. Those then would feed into the model, because in the model, there are certain numbers that are based upon policy decisions, and as those policy decisions change, so would the amounts used in the projection.
So if I could just jump in, just one example that might be, for example, what is, you know, what is the policy for the amount of free cash to be set aside as a percentage of the operating budget? That's one example of a policy that would affect these, this model.
Another benefit is it will allow you to, again, run scenarios on the impact of capital budgets, debt service projections, new initiatives, whether new initiatives means adding staff or adding a particular program, and see what implication that has on the forecast. As you know, capital budgets kind of are made up of things you pay for out of current dollars, but also things that you pay for with debt service, and within that category, there are debt service you fund within the tax levy and debt service you fund outside of the tax levy. So this would, this ties in directly with your capital, your five-year capital improvement program that the town currently prepares. And lastly, and I think, you know, probably one of the most important things is, before you jump into decisions, it does allow you to run iterations, run what-if scenarios. What if we do this? What if we do that? What if this happens? What if that happens? And see kind of the impact of, both the individual impact and then the cumulative impact of decisions that you're considering. So what's included? As I mentioned, the model itself is made up of a number of different worksheets, but in general categories, you're all probably pretty familiar with the general revenue categories that the town has. On property tax, in the model, there'll be a section on the tax levy limit. I should say that in our projection in the model that we prepared as kind of a first iteration, we've assumed no excess capacity. That means you tax up to the levy limit. Driving that money, that amount, though, in the levy limit is a new growth number. The town has done very well. Over the last 11 years, you've averaged about 1.3 million in new taxes as a result of growth in the community, construction, renovation of residential and commercial industrial property. That's over the last 11. Over the last five years, it's been even better. It's almost 1.6 million. So the new growth will play a big role. The model we're using only assumes 1.1 million, so we've taken a very conservative approach on that. And that's something that, as you get closer, you know, the idea of having a finance team is to work closely with the assessor and the building department on projections of new growth. State aid, we're familiar with that. We basically, we've used, on our projection, used actually a five-year historical average, which is very similar to what Mike would do in his projection models. Same with the local receipts. We've been conservative. We've only used a 2% increase a year on local receipts. Free cash, you've used free cash for many different items. In our, in our projection, we've only allocated 1.8 million and left many of the other areas where you have in the past used it to be determined. I think this will happen as you go through your budget process and as you go through your policies, to determine the appropriate use of free cash, where you want to use it, how you want to use it. The other available funds is a really small, small category. I won't go through that. Again, on general expenditures items, you're very familiar with the town operating budgets. In the forecast model, we do have a worksheet that allows you to play, to run different wage settlement scenarios. We have both a section for step increases that employees may receive, and we have a section for cost-of-living adjustments by department. So we've used a set of numbers in our projection, and we've straightlined it, but again, that's an area where you could do different modeling with the kind of amounts that you're considering. On expenses for the town, you know, the general expense budgets, right now, it's, we've just applied a 2% across the board on expense. I'm not talking your fixed cost items. I'm talking your, you know, your supply budgets, your, you know, regular departmental operating expenses. On the school operating budgets, we've broken it down into the three school budgets that you have, your own local school, Nacho Technical, and Shawshin Valley High School, and we've used a 3 to a 3.25% budgetary increase. That may be too low. Those numbers, two of them are assessments that come in, and one is your own school department. Again, though, that amount, you know, would certainly change as you get more information from those departments. On employee benefits, the two big items in there, there are a number of different items. The two big items are health insurance and your retirement schedule. Your health insurance, we're using a 5% increase each year. It is a lot of money, 650,000, roughly 650,000 increase. And on retirement, we're, right now, we're using the schedule that has been adopted by, I guess, Middlesex County? They actually provide the schedule to the town. That's changed every three years or two years? Every two years. So I'm not sure if you're in cycle for this year for a change or not, but, again, that's about a $400,000 increase. So in those two categories, you have about a $1 million increase in budgetary costs in our, in our projection. Unclassified, again, they're very, they're very small. Property and liability insurance, just kept at a 2.5% increase. That's fairly stable. One thing I want to mention about that is that as you add new buildings or expand, then you'd certainly want to work with your insurer to see how that might affect the cost for, you know, property insurance. State and district assessments, we've kept that just at 2.5%. Probably the biggest item that you will be discussing as you proceed with both using the model and then working on the annual budget is this last category. It's really made up of a number, many different items. I call it capital-outlay reserves and other Warren articles, from tax levy and free cash. Tax levy is from current dollars, free cash is that reserve of money you have. But in your budget, there's almost $6 million that is appropriated in these categories from those two sources, whether it be free cash or tax levy. You put in 2.5 million in capital, a million in OPEB, another million in capital stabilization, and then you have a retirement reserve that's 1.5. These are all items that we've, we've kept in the projection, but as you work through the development of your policies and look at your budgetary needs, you'll certainly be spending time looking at those items. Now, I'd like Jeff to read the fifth line. This is, this is a summary table that will be in the report. And I know it's very difficult to see, but I guess the only reason I wanted to put it up here is, this is an iteration, so we don't want you to get hung up on the bottom lines here. As I mentioned, this is an iteration that takes kind of your existing policies, existing programs, some of the estimates that we, that we used, and comes up with a projection for the next five years. This is backed up by, as I mentioned, detail worksheets. There's a revenue detail worksheet that supports the summary revenue accounts, and then there's also an expenditure detail worksheet that backs up all of those expenditure lines. And then there are, then there are either, there are worksheets that might back up a specific item in expenditure. For example, there may be an item that talks about, you know, your, more detail on your debt service. This projection does not, does not include any projection for additional debt service at this point. That'll be in discussion with the town manager and the Board of Selectmen as you review the capital improvement program. As I mentioned, the debt service, there are multiple ways of funding that debt service, and as you look at the multiple ways, you can run those numbers through this model and see what impact it has. Well, just, just that one little larger. I don't know if you can actually see that from, can you all see that from where you are? This is just suggestion on kind of the next steps to be taken for fiscal '20, but you could say that's the, those are the steps you would take each year, that, you know, there should be a finance team established and a one person that's going to take the lead, going to be the coordinator of working with this model. You don't want, very difficult if you have different groups running off, running different scenarios, because it's almost unlimited, the number of, you know, iterations you can run. So it's good to have both a lead person and a lead person that can direct the team. And by team, it can be both, you know, both internal and external people. That's really a determination that the town would want to make. Now, the tax recap will be submitted within a month, a couple of weeks?
Yes.
So when that, when that's submitted, this model should be updated with those new numbers, because those numbers will be a little different, I would assume, than the numbers I have in the projection. And then in, you know, in January, as Mike and Jeff work on the budget itself, you should update the projections for '20 and then in the out-years, based upon some of the preliminary 2020 budget numbers. As I mentioned, a big item is the discussion of the large CIP projects and how they're going to impact your debt service projections and your reserves, and whether you're doing them with debt exclusions or not. Jeff touched a little bit, I believe, upon the, review your policies of what's from tax levy and what's from free cash, particularly on your capital outlay projects. And also review your policies and the amounts you're going to appropriate to all those various reserves. As I mentioned, there's about $6 million that's in the model, appropriated to many different reserve accounts, and you'll want to look at whether, whether that's a policy you want to continue with. Are there other options? Is it the best use of money? And finally, although it's probably not incrementally a big number for the town, but it's just to monitor the state aid numbers. As Rick knows well, you know, the numbers first come out with the governor in House One in January, I think, third Friday in January, something like that. And that'll come out, you know, I recommend you look at that, maybe make change of projection then sometime in early April. You have the House, and then you have the Senate. So as those new numbers come out, you can update the model. Probably not going to have a major swing in your case, but it's a standard practice that we recommend for everybody to, you know, keep things updated as things change. So with that, I, I'm done with my presentation. I'd be happy to answer some questions if you have, or I can answer them at the end after Rick is finished with his presentation. Is everybody okay to move on to Rick?
Sure.
Go ahead, Rick, you're up.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Rick Kingsley, and I'll be talking about the Financial Management Structure Review. The Financial Management Structure Review was precipitated by the entire retirement of the Town Accountant's Office, including your longstanding, hard-working town accountant. So that was, that's a pretty daunting challenge, and I know that your financial structure was largely set up in your Town Manager Act, which was adopted in 1950. So it's almost 70 years since this financial structure has been looked at in any kind of detailed way. And the way we undertook that review is we interviewed the department heads and the staff in each of your financial offices, including the payroll office. We also spoke to your IT director. You know, we reviewed some of the documents, some of the other things that were distributed to us by those department heads, and we came up with some recommendations. But the primary thrust of the report, as I said, focuses on that first challenge, replacing the long-tenured staff of your Town Accountants Department. In the process of conducting this report, we learned of a couple of other things that will likely be challenges as well. And the first is the conversion to the Munis system for your financial management software, and I understand that that has been delayed a little bit due to the departure of a couple of key staff people, Assistant Town Manager and your payroll person, to name two of them. So, but the good news is the town has hired a consultant to help manage that project, which I think is terrific, because this is a very large investment in software, and in order to make this thing work the way it should, you need to do the work at the onset to get it set up correctly and get things working properly. Otherwise, you're not getting the most for your money. So that is a challenge, but it looks like the town is on the right track with that in terms of hiring a project manager. The third thing we noticed was that the town really, and this speaks to a lot of what Tony said around the forecasting model, and that model, the bottom-line numbers in that model will change depending on this third bullet point here. How do you use those reserves and which capital items do you fund? The good news is you have an ample amount of reserves. Your fund balance is higher than the other comparable communities that we looked at, which is a good thing. Unfortunately, you don't really have sound policies around how to use those reserves, how much should be put in annually, and the like. So, you know, the challenge, I think, will be coming up with policies around when and how you use those reserves.
Who was the consultant that was hired? Because that's the first I'm hearing, that we hired a consultant from Munis.
The consultant for the Munis?
When we spent $1 million for Munis, is Munis not doing the consulting work?
Well, I think it's best if you have a third party that is your project manager that doesn't work for Munis, but it's my understanding that you hired Clifton Larson? Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, right. What was the price tag on that? Do we know?
It's $25,000.
For a year, a month?
No, it's for work associated with bringing the, the first order of business is the chart of accounts, working to establish, revise the existing chart of accounts, working with the Town Accountant's Office and others to set that up. That's really the basis for everything that follows.
So what are we getting out of Munis's $1 million for their, are they helping us at all?
Yeah, they're certainly part of this, but, you know, the cost of Munis includes software and licensing and a number of different other pieces that were described at the town meeting.
Yeah, I think your Munis contract covers three years of licensing.
Yes, right.
For the use of their software.
Yes.
And then we're paying them a fee of $200,000? Is that what it is? A year?
Not yet.
Not yet, but we will be, which is a big nut as well, on top of the $1 million, and now we're hiring an additional consultant. Okay. Go ahead.
So the, the primary thing I want to talk about is, is what do you do to replace Mike and his staff, but primarily the department head? So the primary recommendation is that you create a Finance Director's position. Now, that would, that would elevate the town accountant to Finance Director/Town Accountant. Under the general laws, accountants have pretty narrowly defined responsibilities. They are to complete, keep a complete set of books for the town, which measures the expenditures against appropriations, tracks revenues against revenue estimates. The accountant is required to do an annual report each year. The accountant is, generally receives budget information. And under your Town Manager Act, the town manager has responsibility for the budget, though, but Mike and his office do play a large role in the budget process. So a Finance Director has more broad-based financial responsibilities. It seems, reading your Town Manager Act, that there really isn't any one person assigned responsibility for financial management. You could certainly say it's Jeff. You know, it does say he's the fiscal officer in terms, but that's under preparation or approval of warrants. It's kind of a narrow definition in my mind. So I think if you were to elevate the town accountant to a Finance Director or accountant, you would also have that person oversee the treasure collectors and the assessor's office as well. So there would be some cohesion there as well.
How does that change the town charter? I'm a little wary about that.
It does not change the town charter.
And does it need to be changed? And need to elevate that?
Well, I think, Jeff, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. So there's two ways certainly of doing this. One is through, one is through a voted town meeting to change the town manager... One is through, one is through a voted town meeting to change the Town Managers' Act and establish a finance director slash town accountant. That, if the vote was successful, then would have to go to the legislature for approval. The other approach, and the one that I'm recommending, and you'll note via an email that was provided in your packet from town council, the other approach is via a policy decision where the board can modify the town accountant's position to establish a finance director slash town accountant. Taking that approach, I guess you could say has less permanency, because a future Board of Selectmen could decide to change that back to a town accountant. But the reason why I'm suggesting that we go that route is that the process of hiring Mike's replacement is going to be taking place over the next few months. And there needs to be some measure of certainty as to whether the person that we're selecting, that the board is going to be ultimately appointing, is going to serve in the role of a town accountant or a finance director slash town accountant. They're two distinct roles and responsibilities. I think in terms of the recruitment process, you're targeting two different types of people with different skill sets, so that's why I'm suggesting via a policy approach. At a point in time in the future, the board may want to pursue the more permanent approach of amending the Town Managers' Act, but for now, I'm suggesting a policy change.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to touch a point. You look at the very bottom, says finance director, responsible for town financial planning and operations. What that tells me is if we create this position, we're going to take the power away from the town manager creating the budget? So in other words, this new position, that person's going to be responsible for preparing a town budget?
No, no, that wouldn't change the responsibility for town budgeting, but the finance director, town accountant, very similar to the way Mike has been, would be Jeff's key point person on finance. Okay? So, he would advise Jeff, but the budget is definitely Jeff's purview under your Town Manager.
Right, as the chief fiscal officer.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do all the towns have a financial director?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to get into that a little.
Okay, all right, thank you. I thought I saw that.
That will definitely be addressed. So, moving along here, what are the benefits of having a finance director? Creates a focal point for finance, which you really don't have now, and reduces the number of direct reports to the town manager. Currently, there are 16 department heads reporting to your town manager, I believe. It facilitates the formation of a financial team, which is the recommended approach. The Division of Local Services highly recommends you set up a financial team. They meet regularly. They discuss things like financial operations, because if you think about it, a lot of this financial operational work in the treasurer collectors, the assessors, in the accountant's office, they're all, that information flows between and among all those offices, right? And a lot of the responsibilities, such as setting a tax rate, issuing tax bills, cut across several of those departments. So you need to be coordinated to get all that stuff done on time. And it also helps with financial procedures and financial controls, because the finance director has the authority to go into the office of one of their colleagues and advise them on how to do things that might not be being done correctly.
So you're saying that right now, our town accountant doesn't have meetings with the assessors or the treasurer?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that at all.
That's almost what I thought it heard.
He doesn't have authority to direct them to do something. This would give him that authority, because they would report to him. So the benefit of that is, is you get good financial procedures, you get timely reconciliations of cash and other good financial controls that are beneficial for the town to have.
Well, Mr. Morris, you're meeting with these and providing good financial information to the town now, aren't you?
I believe so.
Yeah. It seems like you're not, according to Mr. Kingsley.
No, I'm not arguing that Mike is doing anything wrong at all. But the issue is, how are you going to replace this gentleman who has provided this counsel to the town manager over the years, and has provided all this good information to you? And I would submit that it's information that is above and beyond.
I just want the public to know he's providing good information, because you're making it sound like he's not, and I believe he is.
No, 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 I don't mean to.
The way you're presenting it is if this is, you know, we've never done this before.
My, no, no. My focus on this.
This is all brand-new.
Is what's going to happen when Mike is no longer working here. Okay? That's what we're trying to grapple with. And I think the point is valid, that he's doing a lot of things that the typical town accountant does not do.
And just for, one example of that is, in the borrowing process, the town accountant, if you were to look at the job description of the town accountant in the way it's established, the town accountant is not the person that is the point person on borrowing, but over time and just given his institutional knowledge of that process, he is really the point person for the borrowing. Technically, from a, you know, strict job description or legal responsibilities perspective, the borrowing process really rests with the treasurer. But, you know, and that's, it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's not to say that Pam McKenzie, the current treasurer, is not qualified. It's just that over time, as, you know, treasurer collectors have changed over the years, Mike has assumed a greater role. Now, the next town accountant, will they, you know, if you, if you look at the strict description of a town accountant, that job description does not include being the point person on borrowing. But the finance director would include that responsibility.
Yeah, I understand. But I just want to just add one other thing, but what I'm getting at, Jeff, is that I think that there's a financial team in place, and Mr. Kingsley is implying that there's not. And I just want to make sure that the public realizes that your administration is doing a fine job with the financial situation of the town. Mr. Eaton?
So just, I just want to flush out a point, so that I think we're all clear. Right now, Mr. Morris's position is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. But within the organizational structure of the town, how it operates is he's one of several department heads. And what you're suggesting as something to happen going forward with Mr. Morris's successor is that the two other department heads with whom he most interacts right now essentially report to the town accountant, so that, I guess, rather than our town manager meeting with 16 department heads, and three of them have to do with just a portion of the budget, that the financial director slash accountant, I guess, can kind of clean up some of those conversations, so that collaboratively, our town manager and our finance director slash accountant, to be named later, are able to do the financial planning going forward. Do I understand your proposal correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. I do want to say, Mr. Morris, and I'd ask that you extend the same to Ms. Herman, thank you for your decades of service. In the presentation that you two gentlemen have provided to us, the preamble, if you will, speaks very much to the financial stability and strength of our town, and I think that that is very much a product of the work that your office does, as well as the town manager as well. So I, before people start panicking about the financial management of this community, I do want to publicly say thank you very much for, is it 30, whatever, it doesn't really matter, the details, but, but thank you very much for your service, because I think you've done a fantastic job, as these two gentlemen are saying, really growing with your position, maybe even beyond it, to serve the town. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself here, but I just want to ask the question while it's on my mind. Would this proposed position change the fact that the Board of Selectmen appoints only the manager and the town accountant? Would we no longer appoint this position, given its new title?
No, I, the expectation, certainly in terms of what I'm proposing, which again is a policy change with respect to the position, the Board of Selectmen would appoint the finance director slash town accountant.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So our recently departed Assistant Town Manager, I believe for the Mass Municipal Association, a few months ago had written a report based on some of what your presentation didn't touch upon today, but what the packet you gave him.
Hasn't yet.
Okay, well, maybe I'm jumping ahead and I'll let you, you top it.
Yeah, I will cover the task force. You're talking about the Lieutenant Governor's?
I am.
Task force, yeah, I will cover that quickly. Couple other benefits, again, assist the manager with the budget, as Mike has done in the past, assess risk around your financial operations. That doesn't necessarily mean all town-wide risks. Some of the risk is IT-related, some of it's public safety-related. There's risk all over the place these days, and that's a major focus of a lot of communities these days, is to analyze and assess that risk regularly. And the last thing is develop procedures, implement solutions around the management letter findings. A lot of towns don't do that promptly, but that's something a finance director would have the standing to do. The fiscal policy responsibilities would be maintaining that revenue and expenditure forecast that Tony showed you, and maintaining the one that Mike keeps up, but also using that to examine some what-if scenarios. What if you did this? What if you issued debt for that, you know, a fire substation? What would that cost? You know, it's a good format for spreading those things out and analyzing things and helping you make decisions, because, you know, I'm not saying, believe me, that things aren't going well financially. Things are going very well financially here, but you've got a lot of decisions to make, and you need tools to make them to the best of your ability as policymakers. So maintaining the forecast is a huge responsibility, preparing fiscal analysis, cost-benefit analysis, periodically reviewing user fees to make sure that they're where they should be is a good thing. But recommending financial policies on target levels of reserves and how they should be used, making recommendations on what to put into OPEB and your pension reserve, what to pay early in terms of your pension assessment, what additional amounts towards your pension assessment, rather, and what you're going to spend for capital funding. So, next we get into the labor market for town accountants. And this probably extends to other financial officers, assessors and treasurer collectors as well, but our issue right now is in the accounting office. So, it's a highly competitive market with a shortage of well-qualified people. And that's because people are retiring, baby boomers are retiring. I think roughly, I think that report by the Lieutenant Governor said about a quarter of the town accountants were planning retirement within the next five years, and that's a pretty big number. And they're not, there isn't a strong bullpen coming up through the minors, you know, young people, the age of my kids, are not getting into municipal finance. And it's unfortunate, but that's the reality. The Lieutenant Governor convened this working group to study this issue, and your former town Assistant Town Manager was part of that group. They recommended making initiatives to increase the level of interest, you know, in younger people, essentially through the schools, expanding, offering more training through the State Division of Local Services, the various professional associations, and considering regionalizations. Well, the problem with those things is they're going to take time, and you guys don't have much time. So I'm not expecting the market to be transformed when you need to replace Mike, which is very shortly. So, next, so. Okay, so enhancing the scope and the authority of the position makes the job more attractive. And that's why adding those finance director responsibilities, again, some of which Mike is already doing. And the compensation, the base compensation should be raised to between $100 and $125,000 to attract quality applicants. The salary range is based on the salary ranges for finance directors in comparable communities. It's the base salary level. It doesn't include things like longevity that can get added on top of that.
I do, I do want to clarify that our numbers are fiscal '17. They were based on a survey, based upon pay in fiscal '17, so they're, you know, they obviously have been factored, they should be factored up.
Mike, you sure you want to go now that you see the salary?
We'll see.
See, this was all designed to have Mike stay on for another five years.
That would be great.
So, looking at the structure in some of the comparable communities, which I'll tell you who they are in a minute, seven of the 10 comparable communities have a finance director. Four of those seven have a finance director town accountant. Two of the seven have a finance director treasurer, and one of the seven has a standalone finance director. And all of the finance directors in these comparable towns oversee the other finance offices. The comparable towns are Valrica, Burlington, Chelmsford, Drackett, North Andover, North Redding, Redding, Tuxbury, Wakefield, and Westford. Chelmsford, Drackett, North Andover, North Redding, Redding, Tuxbury, and Westford are the ones with finance directors.
Standalone finance director?
Westford is the only standalone.
And the other ones have finance directors slash town accountant?
Four of them have finance director town accountants, two have finance director treasurer, I believe Drackett, and Chelmsford might have the finance director treasurer's. North Andover, North Redding, Redding, Tuxbury have the finance director accountant, and Westford has the standalone. So, you know, I think the difficulty here is replacing your hard-working, longstanding finance expert here with a pool that's pretty, pretty short. It's pretty tough to find somebody, and this is a way to make the job more attractive, to provide a little extra salary to the position perhaps, to make it more attractive. But you do need somebody good in that office, and if you hire somebody that can't do the job, and you have to pay consultants to come in and reconcile cash and keep your books up to date, you know, that would be a step back, I think. So, I think it's a good time to look at this structure and perhaps make a change. So, thank you.
So in terms of action, the recommendation, as I said, is that the board, it doesn't need to be at tonight's meeting. I recognize this is all being presented this evening, but I would like the board to consider over the next couple of weeks, the prospect of taking a vote, perhaps at your meeting on the 26th, to revise the town accountant position to create a finance slash town accountant position. The decision, I think, is important to be made, so that as the position gets advertised, we can be clear on what it is that the town is seeking here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Jeff, this report that we got, has that been forwarded to the Finance Committee?
Yes.
And I know there's a meeting for the Finance Committee coming up later this month. Are they going to discuss this at all? Because I would like... Are they going to discuss this at all? Because I would like to see their input on this recommendation, just to get an overview of what our Finance Committee, which is a lot brighter on these numbers that he showed us than I. So I think if we can get some kind of discussion discussed at that meeting, and maybe a decision made or something by them, then we can better make a better decision on what they're recommending.
It is my expectation that this will be a topic on their agenda, so I can, and certainly Mike will be at that meeting. We can bring back the thoughts and any recommendation that the Finance Committee has.
I'm also going to try to attend that meeting, but there's something I wanted to bring up because there's a lot of information in this little report that they gave us today, that I read today, actually.
Yes, Mr.?
I'll echo Mr. Loud's suggestion that I think it does make sense because this is such a financial operation type of shift that seeking the input of the Finance Committee, I think, does have a good amount of value. I was surprised at the number of the comparable communities that are either bordering Wilmington or within a very short drive of Wilmington that implement this model. I do think it's a creative solution to try and, I guess, deal with the shallow pool of possible candidates to take over of a town accountant. And I think that, at least in theory, this might provide the town manager with the ability to... It might free the town manager up to, I guess, focus on more steering the ship rather than fixing the engine. So I think there might be a benefit here outside of just the actual finances of the town. But again, I would like to hear what the Finance Committee would have to say on this.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation. Very informative. Mr. Morris, thank you for being here. I'd also like to recognize Mr. O'Neil, I believe, is here for this presentation as well. I just quickly would ask that we could get a copy of the presentation, the PowerPoint, for us to make available for folks.
Jeff, I think Jeff has it, right?
Yeah, I can make that available.
That'd be great, and then I look forward to digesting this and hearing more from Mr. Morris in terms of what your opinion on this going forward is. Certainly, it's been noted, the wealth of knowledge that you've obviously accumulated over your many years of service here, which I also thank you for, but I look forward to that. And I think my colleagues have hit it spot on that we certainly would like to get a recommendation from the Finance Committee before proceeding. Thank you.
You spoke on your end?
Yeah, just to echo my colleagues, you know, obviously the town manager, chief fiscal officer, want to hear his input. I'm sure it's going to be favorable, but I'd like to understand where we're going with that. And obviously, Mike, you've known me a long time. I've been here since day one with you, and you've done an outstanding job. You're a class act. You always did a great job. I'd hate to see you go, but obviously, you know, that time is coming. I don't blame you. Yeah, I'll be joining you soon, okay? But anyway, what I was going to say was I'd like to hear from the manager and obviously the town accountant. And what Mr. Loud brings up is a good, valid point. We want to hear from the Finance Committee on their feelings on this. And do we have to move on? Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot to take in with this. And just to say that we're going to recommend or go with a finance director slash town accountant. And then I looked through this booklet that you gave us, but you didn't really hit any of the information that's in here. Because some of the recommendations I really wouldn't go with in terms of... I would like to see the Board of Selectmen continue to sign the vendor and the payroll warrants. I'd like to see what the cost is. You're recommending hiring, I believe I've read in here, at $50,000 a consultant for the computers. You're recommending in the assessors, most towns have 3.9 people, and we have three, so you want to hire a .9 person or another person. I don't know how much that is, the way I read it. You have the technology. You also talk about the water and the sewer operations and how that's going to break out. So, I mean, if we just go ahead and say, okay, we're going to support a finance in town accountants, are all these recommendations going along with that? Because I don't know.
No, you certainly have the discretion to accept or reject any of those recommendations. I mean, if you don't want to appropriate your water budget at town meeting, you know...
No, I mean, maybe we do. I mean, maybe, what I'm saying is that there's a lot here to absorb and to make changes to.
Yeah.
So that's why I would want someone like Mike Morris in the Finance Committee and even the Assessors Office and the Treasurers Office to weigh in on this, to say, yeah, we should go with the water in the sewer this way. We should go with the IT this way and hire a person. It all comes with the cost, you know, and there's a budget line with that cost. So we want to be mindful of that, too, for the taxpayers of the town. But, you know, I had a brief discussion with Mike, and it seems very favorable, you know, and the report's great. So I just don't know how it's going to get implemented, I suppose, but that's for higher minds than myself.
The intent, at least with respect to the presentation, in focusing on the finance, financial management piece is, that is really the most timely issue that needs to be addressed. We know that, you know, Mike is retiring in July, and so within the next month or so, there needs to be notice going out about that position. The question becomes, what is that position? Is it going to be a town accountant position that is, as has been described, although Mike effectively works outside of that scope of work. Ultimately, there's a job description that has to be posted. Is it going to be a town accountant, or is it going to be a finance director slash town accountant? So, you know, that in large measure was why the focus tonight was on that particular piece. There's clearly a number of other recommendations in here that we need to have a conversation about and decide on which ones to pursue and which to defer on.
Mr. Eaton, did you have something?
No.
No? Any other questions? Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any chance you stand, Mike?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, all right, on to...
Yes.
Oh, is that, Mr. Teresi? They have a laptop over here. I don't know if that's, oh, that shot's, oh, okay.
That's David Robinson's laptop.
Yeah.
Oh, that one's the town, I believe.
Okay. All right, communications.
So under communications, the first item on the, under communications is a letter from Police Chief Begonis, talking about safety improvements proposed for Shawshin Ave. There was a request that I'd made of the chief to do some traffic counts and speed checks on the stretch of Shawshin, particularly from the Shawshin School to the Belrika Line, as a consequence of some of the data that was gathered. He is recommending a number of different things here, including installation of stop signs at Harold, Reed, Melody, and Grace. Those will require the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Already taken place has been installation of reflectors along the guardrail between Grace and Melody. He's also seeking approval from Mass DOT for the posted school zone signs at Shawshin, relocating some of the existing speed signs. That is really the premise of the letter that he's sending to the representative at Mass DOT. Most of this, or all of this, is really governed by the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or MUTCD, which is the Federal Highway Administration's guidelines or standards, if you will, for traffic control.
Do you want us to vote on those stop signs? I didn't see it in the board to consider.
No, the first step in the process is really to get the response back from the state, and then the chief will be coming in at a separate time with the recommendation on the stop signs.
Okay.
Next is a memo from me to the board, just noting that the Finance Committee is going to be meeting on the 20th of November. There'll be a number of topics on the agenda. One of those topics will be a discussion of the IT departments between school and town. There was a meeting back in August with the Finance Committee, and at that time, there was a request made that both the school and the town follow up with the Finance Committee to address the prospect of integrating, to some measure, certainly looking at opportunities to integrate the IT operations, what kinds of opportunities there might be for savings. So that'll be certainly one topic, as was noted. We'll also be talking about the Collins Center Report, in addition to discussions about the status of the fire apparatus. I would note that I'm meeting with the fire chief and deputy, I believe it's either tomorrow or Thursday, to get a status on the pricing that they'll have for that, so I didn't have that for tonight's meeting. But as soon as I have that available, it'll be provided to the board. And then the other discussion will be about the overtime status on the fire. So those are at least some of the topics for that meeting.
Will either Mr. Teresi or Mr. Kingsley be at that meeting?
No.
If there's Finance Committee's questions on the report?
I don't anticipate them being at that meeting, no.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Will the Finance Committee have provided this information prior to the meeting? Or at the meeting?
The Finance Committee has received a copy of the report that the board received.
Thank you.
Next, under communication is a memo just noting that Chairman Kyra had spoken to me about the prospect of establishing some training. This was a conversation, you'll recall, during the interviews. KP Law noted that they can provide two training sessions to be determined by the town. And it was the chair's desire to establish as the initial training sessions, one on the open meeting law, second training session on the public records law. Both take about three hours to run, and at this point, just given the budget process and the next couple of months being busy, Finance Committee meetings during the February timeframe, we're looking at March to set up times for representatives from KP to come out, and invitations will go out to the boards and committees, encouraging them to attend one or both of these sessions. Next is a memo from me, just noting correspondence that came in last week from Mass Development regarding the Vinfen Corporation. They are a health and human services organization, over 200 locations in Mass and Connecticut. They've been in operation for about 40 years. They provide services in mental health, developmental issues, or traumatic brain injuries. They're working with the Mass Development Organization for refinancing and financing of some property that they own. There's three specific locations in Wilmington, and it appears, based upon the information they are providing, that the amount associated with each of those properties is about 19,000. There was a public hearing that folks would have had an opportunity to comment on. I received the email on the 5th. The hearing was the 7th, so it's FYI at this point. Next is a memo from me to the board, again, more of an FYI, just noting that we did receive and responded to a public records request seeking information related to the standstill agreement. That information was provided through the town clerk's office to the requester.
Okay, board to consider. Items?
The first item under board to consider is a request by Tina Stewart, library director. She is asking for the board's permission to use the Swain Green property on February 19th, 2019, from 2:00 to 3:30. It's a proposed activity involving children's grades four to eight. The Snow Fort Fest, it's being called. It does not appear to be any conflicts on that date, and they're hoping for snow.
And I see that they have a competition for hitting a defined target, so she's not inviting us to go there. Is the target...
She hasn't said.
Okay. Is there a motion to fulfill this request? There's a motion by Mr. Loud, second by Mr. Bendel, all those, any discussion? All those in favor? You announce.
Next is, as you recall, last year we began the process of asking the various community groups that seek to have different events that involve road closures to provide us with their requests in November. It helps us, from a budget perspective, in just knowing what to anticipate. Certainly, the various departments, particularly police and, to some measure, Public Works. So there's multiple requests here. How would the chair wish to proceed? Vote on each one individually or as a packet?
Well, there are no conflicts on the dates with them, the way I looked at it anyways. And the recommendation from...
The recommendations that came back from police, fire, DPW, were that they had no issues with these. So specifically, the organizations that we're talking about, July 4th. This is, of course, subject to Board of Appeals approval, but their plans are to have the fun on the 4th events from July 3rd, which is a Wednesday, to Sunday, July 7th, 2019. Then the Chamber of Commerce is looking again to have their half marathon and 5K run-walk. That would be Sunday, September 22nd, 2019, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The Tony A. 5K Run-Walk is proposed for Saturday, October 12th, 2019. Soul Sisters 5K Road Race is proposed for Saturday, December 15th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. Wilmington Little League Parade, Saturday, April 18th, 2020, at 8:00 a.m. Again, the reason for that year in advance is for budget purposes. We can anticipate the other dates fall within the fiscal 20, fiscal 20 period. Where Won Wilmington 5K Run-Walk for Kim Forte is proposed for Sunday, May 3rd, from 2020, 9:00 a.m. P&amp;Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride. P&amp;Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride, Sunday, May 17th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. And then the Brady Foundation's 5K Run for Recovery, Sunday, June 14th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m.
Okay, I don't have a problem with, you know, taking them all up at one time with the recommendations that we received, but I do have a question on the 4th of July event. You have it from the 3rd to the 7th, so that's five days, and I thought that it was supposed to be a four-day event. And I remember last year, there was an issue on that, we had a resident come in and it was, it was then explained to her that it was actually a four-day event, but this, I see it's five days, right? Three, four, five, six, seven?
Yeah, my understanding is that the fireworks are slated for Saturday, the 6th, with the rain date being the 7th. But I, yeah, as far as I know, that is why the 7th is referenced there.
Yeah.
But, I mean, ultimately, the July 4th needs to go to the Board of Appeals for their approval to use that.
Right. So there won't be a carnival on the 7th, it's just a rain date?
That's my understanding. I will confirm that, but the Sunday, July 7th, is, it's my understanding that that's the rain date.
Okay.
I'll confirm that, though.
All right, so what's the Board's pleasure? Should we take it all at once?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we accept these dates and, given the recommendations that are provided.
Motion made by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton. Any further discussion? All in favor? I'm unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, next is a regulatory agreement. This is for 401 Andover Street, the Spruce Farms Over 55 Development. You'll recall that as part of the zoning here, it required that three units be established as affordable. Part of the process for that, there's 27 units altogether, three are slated to be affordable. There's an agreement that needs to be entered into between the town, the developer, and DHCD, which is a state agency, they will be overseeing the process for monitoring these units. They will be deed restricted so that the units will be affordable in perpetuity, they will run with the deed on the home. So the request here this evening is that the Board authorize the agreement and authorize the Chair, on behalf of the Board, to execute the agreement.
Okay, is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Eaton, second by Mr. Loud. Any further discussion? All in favor? I'm unanimous.
You can sign it after. After me. Final item under Board to Consider is the sale of town vehicles and equipment. Every, typically every year, sometimes every other year, there's a process to, that Public Works goes through in conjunction with input from the applicable departments, to look at vehicles that are no longer of use or value to the town, and there is a process where we accept sealed bids with the intent of selling these vehicles or pieces of equipment to buyers. These vehicles and this equipment is, as is, so to speak, we do not warranty them or guarantee them. They are available for inspection during the regular business hours of the DPW, 6:30 to 3:00. Prior to the town engaging in, or entertaining these bids, it does require a vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize the disposal of this surplus property.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Loud, second by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion? Will this be publicized for, in the town crier or on the website, for the residents to see their opportunity to bid on this?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? I'm unanimous. Thank you.
And I would just note, the proceeds from those, the sale goes to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Okay, on to public comments. And before I do that, I have to apologize to our new State Representative. You were blocked out, they had the perfect line, and I did not see you until they moved, or I would have introduced you at the very beginning of the, of the meeting, but I'd like to introduce to the viewing audience, anyways, I know there's only a few of us here, our new State Representative, David Robertson. Thank you, David, for being here tonight.
Well, I appreciate it, and I just came down to say look forward to working with you, gentlemen, folks in town, accomplished yet. I think they all should have seen who we're making, and we need a better place that, I don't know how you can improve on her fashion, but we'll find a way.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, any other public comments? All set? Okay, we're going to go to new business. Who wants to start? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to congratulate Representative-elect Robinson and wish you well, and certainly will, look forward to working with you. I want to just take a minute to thank the members of our Veterans Service Office, who put on a fantastic Veterans Day ceremony this past weekend. Lou and Mike, once again, outdid themselves, even provided us a little sunshine and break from the rain, and I was so glad to see that so many people took a break from raking leaves in their yard to show up and, and support our veterans. It was a great outpouring of support, there was a tremendous crowd there. I want to compliment everyone who was involved, our police and fire departments, our veterans' agents, really did a great job putting on a really well-deserving ceremony that day, and so I want to compliment the community on coming out and supporting our veterans. I also had the pleasure of joining former Selectman Frank West and the members of the Boy Scouts, along with Representative-elect Robinson was there, writing letters to our veterans, Christmas cards this past weekend, and that was a nice event that they put on the Boy Scouts, so I compliment them on that. I want to give a shout-out specifically to a couple veterans, and I don't want to steal Mr. Loud's thunder, because I know he probably has someone well-deserving, but I want to give a shout-out to two members of our own police department who are serving our country. One is Officer Rafael Cruz, who's just returning from a deployment in the Middle East, and also, who's a member of our armed services, who's currently serving, is Mr. Nick Knoffley, who's a member of the National Guard, currently serving. Both are members of our police department, I applaud them both for their service, we thank them, not only for what they do for the police department, but for our country, and we wish them well, and we welcome home Officer Cruz. And lastly, I want to wish my colleagues a very happy Thanksgiving, and everybody out there in the community a very happy Thanksgiving. We won't meet until after Thanksgiving, so I wish you all well, and to Beverly as well.
I think he said it all, but...
I'll say it again, I see Representative-elect Robinson in the audience, and I congratulate him in person in the primary. I also congratulate him in person after the general, as he's well aware of that, so once again, I would like to congratulate you again, and hope you the best, and really do a great job. I know you've got big shoes to fill, and all we can do is try your best, that's all we can ask for, and I'm sure you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not to belabor the point that Selectman Bendel made, but the ceremony this past Sunday really was quite, quite impressive, with so many people on such a cold and windy day, to give thanks to the people that have sacrificed and have given a lot to protect us, really was a very humbling experience. And Chief, do welcome Officer Cruz back, and I trust that Officer Knoffel's return will be very much appreciated when he does return, so.
I was going to speak about them, too, but it's been spoken already. I will say, I hope that this town honors them in a special way when they do come back to Wilmington. They're not back in Wilmington yet, but they deserve every accolade that this town can give them, because they've sacrificed, the ultimate sacrifice, by not only being an officer in the services that they are, in keeping us protected that they wear, but they're also police officers and first responders, so a very special place in my heart for both of those guys. I also want to talk about Deputy Richter is leaving the town after 33 years of service. I believe this Friday is his last time. I want to thank him, I've got to know him over the last couple of years, being on this board, very professional person, and I wish him the best. He's going to a beautiful town in Maine, but I just want to say thank you to Deputy Richter for all his service to this town. And the last veteran, the last, the veteran that I want to give a shout-out to is a 98-year-old WWII veteran that lives at Windsor Place, her name is Ellen Arbuker. She's a U.S. Coast Guard and a, like I said, a WWII veteran, and Lou told me a few months ago when he met her, that it was said, that it was so long ago that she joined, that she didn't remember why she joined, but it was the best time of her life. So I want to thank her and her family for the service to this great country. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to echo everybody's remarks here. In addition to the great ceremony that was put on by the veterans' agent and the veterans' director, Lou Smaglio, there were, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts were there, the Legion, the band, the Wilmington High School Band, the Minutemen, the procession was just great, and the crowd was outstanding. I couldn't believe how, how many people showed up for that event, it was really nice. And to Deputy Richter, a friend of mine that I actually graduated school with, and he's heading to bigger and better things, but he's leaving us and will cause a big void, I think, in the police department, but we wish him well and all the best in his new endeavors. That's about it, yeah. All set?
Under important rates, we have a curbside collection of yard waste through December 7th. November 14th is the next brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Another drop-off on the 17th, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. November 17th, the Shawshin Tech Craft Fair, 100 Cook Street, Billricka, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Brush drop-off on the 21st, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. November 22nd, Thanksgiving, town offices will be closed. Town offices are also closed on the 23rd. November 24th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. November 26th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9. November 26th also will be a public hearing on the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification in the fiscal 2019 process, Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7:00. November 28th, brush drop-off, again, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. December 1st, Christmas tree lighting, Town Common, 4:00 p.m. The Festival of Lights at Villanova Hall is being held on the 1st and 2nd of December. December 2nd is the Holiday Social, Hunter Tavern, 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. December 6th, Santa's Workshop Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And I don't have it in front of me here, but Chief, there's also a date, which will be Board to Consider next, next meeting, but there's another event, Santa-related. Do you want to just offer the date?
December 9th, some conflicts with the road race, that's Saturday, so we'll have it on the Sunday.
So Sunday the 9th, that'll be a Board to Consider at your next meeting, but as has been the practice for the last number of years, the police and fire get together and have a special event for the kids. And that is, Board's next meeting, or only meeting in December, will be the 10th.
And just to mention that on November 26th, there's going to be a presentation of a POW MIA chair that's going to be donated to us by the Shawshin Technical High School, so that'll be a little bit of a ceremony for that presentation. So that's on November 26th, if anybody's interested in coming down and seeing that. Okay, that's it. Does anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Eaton. Any discussion on that? All in favor? I'm unanimous, and good night.